Please rise to the pledge. Pledge of the flag.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indisultable, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassener?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 10th, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Journal is approved. We have no bid openings tonight, so we'll move to Communications.
Mr. Chair, there are tax compromises regarding matters this evening, so I'll move to Road and Bridge Matters. Under Road and Bridge Matters, Item Number 1, 1st District.
Receive filed plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending Federal Highway Administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 2, 7th District.
Receive filed plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved by the Director of Procurement. Be authorized to advertise for bids pending Federal Highway Administration authorization as requested, and a copy of the report to be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other Communications, Mr. Chair. Item Number 1.
Receive file and County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for Item Number 2, and that will be the order.
Item Number 3, all districts?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number 4, 2nd District.
Receive file and the deposit agreement and subdivision plan be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 5, 2nd District.
Receive.
That's for me. Receive file and deposit agreement and subdivision plan be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 6?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number 7, 4th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item Number 8?
Receive file and County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number 9?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item Number 10?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item Number 11, 2nd District.
Receive file and contract in amount not to exceed $591,778.79 be approved and awarded to KCI Construction Company E. Lowest responsive bidder as recommended.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 12, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th Districts.
Receive file contract in amount not to exceed $545,297.24 be approved and awarded to NB West Contracting. Lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revisions to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 13, 6th District.
Receive file and County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 14, 7th District.
Receive file and County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 15, 7th District.
Receive file contract in the amount not to exceed $1,414,708.35 be approved and awarded to NB West Contracting. Lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revisions to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 16, all districts?
Receive file and hold on the order business, and that will be the order.
Item Number 17, 2nd District.
Receive file and refer to Committee of the Whole, and that will be the order.
Shall we read the add-ons, Mr. Chair?
Please read the add-ons.
Item Number 1, all districts?
Receive file and County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. This is a pay raise for lieutenants, captains, and high-ranking officers. We still need to see a fiscal note for this legislation.
Item Number 2, all districts?
Receive file and County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. I would like to see a summary of the yearly repayment plan for this legislation as well. It shouldn't be too hard to come up with.
Item Number 3, 5th District.
See file and petition be referred to the Board of Election Commissioners for verification of signatures, and to the St. Louis County Council for review and recommendation.
Report to County Executive.
Nothing further this evening.
Public forum.
We have 25 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so please approach the podium when your name is called. We'll also announce the name of the second person to speak. I understand there are strong opinions about what we're here to talk about tonight. I would ask for you all to respect the speaker and allow them to speak uninterrupted. We would like to let everyone make their statements. Everybody works hard. Everybody works hard to come up with what they have to say, and we'd like for them to be able to say it without interruption. Thank you, first speaker.
First speaker this evening is Matt Gracilius, followed by Casey Krebs.
Good evening. I'm Matt Gracilius, and the Business Manager of the County Police Association, and I reside in Council District 7. Honorable members of the council, I come before you for the third time in five days and urge you to vote to perfect Bills 272 and 273 tonight in their current form. We have been working to get to this point for over four years. Thanks to the previous administration's neglect and stonewall tactics, nothing was ever accomplished. And now those voted out of office get to enjoy an undeserved pension that is more than our salaries will ever be as officers. Chairman Page, your alignment with former Charlie Dooley henchman Gary Earls has been suspected throughout this process but was confirmed this afternoon. You have partnered with a man who intentionally caused a tremendous amount of damage to the police department. The problems we face today are a direct result of his mismanagement philosophy. Now you are teaming with him to scheme against the will of the people that voted him and his boss Charlie Dooley out of office. We are aware of a set of text messages that you inadvertently sent to the wrong person today. You have exposed your fake concern about the pension. From your text messages that were intended to go to Gary Earls, I quote, "I can't be there early. Rochelle and Hazel may want to meet at 2:30. I'm going to offer an amendment to set aside 15% of the Prop P money until we know the pension impact. That's probably all I can do. Otherwise, we are just making Stanger look like a hero. We can't get our message out if the police don't care. If you meet early with them, I can meet with you at 4:00 or 5:00, 4:30 or 5:00. Thanks." I highly doubt your colleagues are aware that you're using them and speaking for them to advance your political agenda. Having read these messages to the public, it demonstrates how this has become a personal vendetta against County Executive Stanger. You may not like or agree with him, but Prop P funds can no longer be used as your pawn to get back at him. Leave these police officers out of it, and leave their families out of it. All you care about is not making Stanger look like a hero. Your actions and playing around with the Prop P funds is an attempt to subvert the will of the voters. What message are you trying to send when you are dishonoring your office? We are not pawns to play in your political game. It's time to stop listening to those voted out of office and start listening to the voters that put you into office. Perfect and pass these bills. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. So I do depend on many people for advice in county government, and I appreciate that advice, and we try not to get personalities involved. But unfortunately, the information we need to make decisions has been routinely withheld. But I think we have a plan to move forward. I am disappointed as anyone that the discussion of the pension has been politicized, but I think we have a plan to move forward, and I hope we can talk about that tonight and separate our personalities and our differences. But I do disagree with the characterizations of my intentions, but I respect Matt's ability to have that opinion, and I appreciate his leadership in the police. But I do not intend to personalize my goal of increasing pay for police officers, but I do intend to make sure that the pensions are appropriately funded. Unfortunately, the information we needed to pick the right number for the pension wasn't pursued and was withheld. So now we have to make sure that some of the Proposition P money is set aside and is available to support the police benefits and pensions once we know what that number is. And that's my position. That's what I intend to do, and I hope we can continue this conversation and move forward. We do have many differences. I don't think we should resort to name-calling. I don't think that helps. I hope we can all focus on the issues in front of us and come to a responsible agreement on how we can dramatically increase county police salaries and make sure the pension that we promised them is available. The current number in the budget does not support the salary increases, but if we set aside some money, then we'll be ready when we get the right number. That's the reason why I'm going to offer this substitute later tonight. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Casey Krebs, followed by Nick Cassoff.
Hello.
Hi.
I would like to thank the County Council and Chief Belmar for inviting me to speak today. By way of introduction, my name is Casey Krebs, and I am the wife of a St. Louis County Police Officer, John Krebs. John has been an active-duty officer for more than 20 years and has spent the last 10 years with St. Louis County. I am a St. Louis County resident and have been my whole life, and I am responsible for running a very large automotive dealership in the South County area. Our dealership had the honor of being served by Officer Blake Snyder and Elizabeth. We're very grateful. As the wife of a county officer, I want to share with you how proud I am of John and of the St. Louis County Police Department. I'm sure I share with many spouses, family, and friends the anxiety and fear and stress every day when my husband leaves for duty. My children have an unspoken fear of their daddy not returning home, and countless disappointments of holidays, games, school events, and bedtimes that are missed. This is the life we signed up for, and these are the duties that we have as an officer's family. As times have changed and the rhetoric has intensified, the job has become more dangerous. Obviously, these men and women did not sign up to protect all of us for the money. It's the sense of pride and the belief in our laws and our community that serves as the driving force for each of these officers. The compensation they receive today is inadequate to the huge responsibility that they face every time they put their uniform on. Many officers are forced to work secondary jobs in order to supplement their incomes just to make ends meet, and therefore sacrifice time with their spouses and their children. We need this proposed increase to help compensate these officers for the hard and dangerous job and responsibilities they carry every day. As a wife and a mother, I worry about our future and the future of my children. We need the security to raise our children and to provide a good life for them. The current salary structure does not allow for that. We want to send our children to college and give them the best opportunities available. The current salary structure does not allow for that. I ask that when you consider all of these aspects of this proposed salary increase, that you consider the positive advances that each of your officers will gain to their lives, to their families, and to their future.
Next speaker is Nick Cassoff, followed by Susan Clark.
Good evening. I want to give a little perspective on two issues. I understand you've got a pot of money, and it's always popular to hand it out, but a police officer straight out of the academy, according to the county's own employment website, starts at a salary of just over $48,000 a year. Now, I live in Ferguson, and in our area, that's about 50% more than the average household income. And if you take two people making $48,000 a year, that's people fresh out of the academy. That adds up to the median household income in Chesterfield, one of the most affluent parts of our county. Now, I don't expect anybody to work for peanuts, but I don't think a starting pay of $48,000 a year is peanuts. And if we get to the higher levels, you get to a mid-level white shirt in the County Police Department. He's making more money than a nurse practitioner who has a doctorate in nursing and can prescribe medicines and treat people who are sick. Now, again, people should be paid for what they do, but I think the concept that police officers are, you know, going to food pantries and skipping meals is really unfair to the taxpayers that support them. Now, I understand that police officers face things that most of us don't face in our daily lives, and that there's some need to be compensated for that as well. But again, let's have a little perspective. There is a website called the Officers Down Memorial Page, which is run by a police organization. And according to the statistics on that website, a police officer today is safer and less likely to die at work than at any time in the past century. I think that's fantastic, and applause to the police department and whoever else caused that to be. But the idea that you might not come home at night, there's a lot... The police officers are in the 14th most dangerous occupation in America. Truck drivers, construction laborers, grounds maintenance workers, the guy mowing the grass over at Shaw Park, and garbage collectors are more likely to die at work than a police officer. So I say, by all means, let's compensate our officers well for the job they do, but let's have some perspective here. This isn't a crisis that needs to be solved by putting all of that Proposition P money in the hands of police officers. There's a lot of other public safety needs in this community that need to be met, and the council ought to take the time to look at them.
Next speaker is Susan Clark, followed by Linda Holtz.
That wasn't the most graceful entrance. My apologies. A couple things. I have very strong feelings about police officers, and I'm not in favor of raising their pay. I am in favor of increasing training. I'm in favor of increasing health care and mental health resources for the police officers in this community. I'm in favor of increasing staffing of social workers and other professionals who might be able to help police officers address situations that can be dangerous and can be stressful. I'm also in favor of holding them accountable for their behavior, which has not been happening of late. This afternoon, Councilman Walton Gray held a hearing on the behavior of the police at the Galleria last month. It was egregious. It was out of context and out of anything appropriate, and it was followed by equally egregious behavior by the corrections officers at the Justice Center. There are issues that need addressing in the justice system in this community and in the county. They may need addressing with money, but increasing the salaries of the police officers isn't one of them. My one final thing is, it took an hour to come into this building today to clear security. I had to go through twice because the security rules change entering this building. They are arbitrary, and they are fluid, and they are not in writing. There were people who would have loved to have spoken earlier today who couldn't get through the security. I couldn't leave today knowing that I might not be able to get back in to come to this hearing. When I asked the supervisor why I wasn't allowed to bring an empty water bottle in, she said, "Well, those are dangerous. We've had water bottles thrown at us." And I looked at her and said, "When was the last time anybody threw anything at you in a county council meeting or anywhere in this building?" And she said, "Well, no, never." "When has anybody even laid a hand on you in this building? You are not unsafe in this building." What they are doing is attempting to keep people who are concerned with their behavior out of this chamber, and I resent that. I finally said, "If I brought Maalox or vinegar, could I get those in the building?" And she said, "No." They told someone she couldn't come in with a marker, a marker. This is really arbitrary and really unnecessary.
Next speaker is Linda Holtz, followed by Justin Nichols, Sr.
Good evening. My name is Linda Holtz. Last April, the citizens of St. Louis County voted to pass Proposition P. This is an undisputed fact. Yet, there are ongoing unresolved issues regarding the passage of Proposition P. Most of us would never choose to become police officers, but my sons all chose to serve. I'm the mother of two active St. Louis police officers and one who has moved to another law enforcement agency because of the low pay and the benefits. My third son, as parents of these fine young men, my husband and I are proud of their commitment to serve in the law enforcement community, as we believe the vast majority of you respect the work of the St. Louis County police officers. Police officers often see the human condition at its worst. Even so, sometimes they are treated with contempt, distrust, and disrespect. As a mother, it breaks my heart to hear this. It does. And it also makes me fear even more for their safety and their morale. What is amazing to me is that police officers run into danger when the rest of us are running away, and they take seriously their pledge to honor and serve all people all the time. St. Louis County is a wonderful place to raise your children and to build a life, and the county should not wish to lose experienced officers to other agencies and other departments because of the pay and the benefits. We need these dedicated men and women to help St. Louis County remain a vibrant, safe place to live. And again, the voters of St. Louis County validated our officers by voting yes on Proposition P. During the campaign for Proposition P, I went around my neighbor... An area where I live, which was an older neighborhood, there are a lot of people there that are retired. They're living on fixed incomes. And they spoke to me and told me how, yes, they were going to vote for Proposition P. This touched my heart because these people are living on fixed incomes. I understand a fixed income. I live on one myself, but they wanted to show their support for the county police. The people have spoken. The money is available, and experts have given testimony as to the cost of officer pensions. So the question remains, why, after all this time, hasn't Proposition P moved forward? Why has it not been implemented? With honor and respect for all of you who serve on this board, I ask you to move forward with Proposition P. Do your part to acknowledge the overwhelming majority of voters in St. Louis County who has requested, who has voted for this request. And I look at these officers all around, all around me, and they have given their blood, sweat, tears, and even sometimes their lives to serve the people in St. Louis County. Please vote yes to perfect this ordinance so that we can move forward quickly and the officers can receive the pay that they really deserve and that we would like to see happen to them, and we thank you. They often... They get up every day, and they go out there.
You'll have to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. They answer the dangerous call to serve, and we thank them very much.
Next speaker is Justin Nichols, Sr., followed by State Representative Bob Burns.
Good evening. First want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm encouraged by your listening ear, and I'll try to make my comments as brief as possible. I first came to know St. Louis County Police Department, obviously, from growing up in the area, but happened to leave in 1997 due to joining the Navy. I've been going out of the St. Louis area for a very long time, and in the midst of August of '14, my family and I decided that it's probably best to even think about moving back. I'm currently married with six sons, range... A large range of ages, and the Lord has blessed us with this beautiful bronze skin. Now, I must say that in the midst of all of that, I was a firefighter down in Cobb County, Georgia for over seven years, and I was thrust into making the decision. When I moved back, am I going to be part of a problem or part of a solution? And in the midst of that turmoil and frustration, I decided to give St. Louis County Police Department a shot, which is very different because it's a different culture from the fire department. But I must say, from the very time that I stepped foot in that department, I was met with pure professionalism, integrity, and character, and it was a draw to me to learn a little bit more about it. So I can say that the move here has been challenging. Obviously, it's been a lot that's taken place. It's been a lot of opinions, anger. It's been a lot of emotion within my own family. But I can say that the community of St. Louis County has voted Prop P for a reason, and that reason is because they understand what police officers go through each and every day. They understand that although we're not perfect, that we are a necessary position that has to be here, that we help protect and make sure St. Louis County is the best place to live, work, and play. And I firmly believe that because I live here, my family is here, my kids are here. I'll leave you with this. I know many people have spoke on the issues of finances, the issues of increasing pay, the issues of some of the social and psychological things that police officers deal with each and every day. But as a police officer, I can specifically tell you that recently I had to have a conversation with my 10-year-old son. And in that conversation, he had a challenge because students in his bus told him that they were going to kill police officers. The turmoil comes because his police... His dad is, in fact, a police officer. So these conversations are not easy. I understand anger on both sides, but it's a reason why officers are thankful for the Prop P and the concerns of the community, but more importantly, so they don't have to work secondary. They don't have to do a lot of different things that takes them away from their families. But more importantly, they can sit and rest in the love and affection and pursue the goals, whether it be mentorship, whether it be community outreach, and these things, instead of just working a secondary job just to put food on the table. So I just take this opportunity to give you a look at insight in my life, but more importantly, that you consider to pass Prop P as our community supports us. Thank you.
Our next speaker, State Representative Bob Burns, followed by Andrew Wheeler.
I come here tonight to talk about Proposition P, but first of all, I would like to also recognize Mrs. Snyder and apologize to her that her husband's life tonight was trivialized. I'll guarantee you, I was a truck driver for almost 40 years, and I did not have to worry about my life every time I left my house with my uniform on. So Mrs. Snyder, I apologize, and God bless you. The other issue is, I've been in this business a long time. I know everybody at the table. I respect everybody. I respect every one of you, and I know you have some hard choices, and I've worked with each and every one of you at one time or another. I'd like to compliment Executive Stinger for signing the bill this morning at the first precinct police department. I'd like to compliment the councilmen who were there. Thank you very much. But I'd also like to talk about our police officers. When there is a shooting or bullets are flying, police officers run towards those bullets. They don't run away from them. And I think it's high time that they get the raises they deserve. And the whole time that I've been Board of Education, now State Representative for five years, I have maybe only one other time gotten as many phone calls, people stopping me at the supermarket, or when I'm out at the filling station, or just out in the district at an event, saying, "Why don't they give the police officers their raises that we voted for overwhelmingly?" And believe me, and this is not a threat, it was so overwhelmingly voted for, the voters in this community in St. Louis County are looking at this very closely. And our police officers deserve better than this. They deserve more respect than this. They deserve those raises. And again, the lady said, "Look at all our officers here. Just look at the dedication." And I know $48,000, that might be a high rate for some people, but when you put your life on and you wear a bulletproof vest every day, I don't think that's too high. And I welcome being able to pay them, and that's why the voters overwhelmingly voted for Proposition P for this reason. And no matter what your reasons are for not passing it, or whatever you're saying, I think the evidence has been presented. It'll probably come out later this evening when you talk about this, but it's viewed in one way, that it's not in the best interests of the police officers. And when we have trouble in any of our communities, who do we call? We call the police, and they come and they respond and help us. So there's a reason why we have a St. Louis County internationally accredited police department. It's because they are hot top quality. I think Chief Belmar does a wonderful job, and I just pray that tonight you'll pass Proposition P and get this done with.
I'd just like to make a statement. Bob, you're a legislator. You know, do you know that the money, first of all, is not there yet?
Bob, why don't you come back up to the podium?
We heard this, we heard this last week at the hearing. Everybody was accusing us of holding money up. That is not the case. The first, the first of the money just started coming out October 1st. It's not going to be in our bank until December. It's not available till January the 1st. So what are you talking about, that we're holding it up?
Well, just the meetings that I've attended, and I understand that it's going to happen January the 1st. And just as you said, not political. And again, Hazel, I respect you totally, but when you say not to make this political, when you stood up and walked out of the last meeting, that's political.
You don't know why I walked out.
And God bless you, Michelle. And Michelle, if you abstained, people don't elect you to office to abstain.
Bob, you're attacking us for what you're talking about.
No, I'm not attacking. I'm just telling the truth.
Let me, let me tell you something. The meeting last week was not supposed to be a vote. When, when I left out of the meeting, I was called to come to a meeting. I was on funeral leave because of the death of my sister. I came to that meeting. No, you listen.
I'm listening.
You listen.
I'm listening.
I came to that meeting.
Do you respect urgency?
Okay.
Because I came to hear...
Sorry, Hazel. I'm sorry. We need to let, we need to let the speakers speak and the council members speak. We can't start with the conversations from the audience. We will not get through this night, and this will not end productively. Let's let everyone speak who comes to the podium, and let's let the council members ask them questions. Thank you.
I left the meeting because, and I will say this openly, I left the meeting because I was here practically two days after the death of my sister. I came here not knowing what that meeting was about. I had no idea that we were going to be attacked about withholding police funds, raises, because it hadn't even come up yet. So when I came and heard that the attack and the attempted intimidation of us, I was upset about. I left out because I was already in tears when I came here because I watched my sister die. And I come here and I'm attacked by police officers saying that I'm trying to hold up money when that was not the case. I'm in favor of the raise. I said that we have to. We're responsible for giving that money to the police officers because the voters have said so. So I don't know where you're getting your information from. I did not, and I left out because I was upset. That was my way. Now, if you're going to hold that against me, but let me tell you one thing. I heard things, I had something I was going to say, but I want to say it now. I heard things last week that I, truthfully, when you tell me, and I've told Chief Belmar this before, and he knows that, what I've told him before, you cannot put any amount in front of me, and I will tell you that it's too much for the police officers, because that's not how I feel. I feel they're worth every penny of it. However, don't come in here and tell me about you got to work a second job to feed your family. My husband had to work a second job. He worked in a dangerous atmosphere. I felt like a single parent, but he knew the job he took, and he, we dealt with that. And don't tell me about, you're not getting enough money because it's dangerous or whatever. You think we don't work in a dangerous situation? I could do like Chrysilius or whatever the last name is, and brought in here, the texts that I received post that the police department, and I've never said this before, I've kept it to myself, I could come in here too and bring some information. The post that the police department that are supposed to be on duty wrote about Charlie Dooley and myself, the years that I've been here, racist comments. You think I don't feel intimidated or feel that that's dangerous? I've had citizens who sent me threatening emails. The police department in University had to go visit a man to make him stop. We all experience those things. It's selfish to come in and expect that you're the only people that have dealt with issues. I believe in the raises that they should have, but don't come in here and tell me and sound like you're the only one. We have county employees who are making almost poverty, poverty salaries. They all need raises.
Can I, can I respond?
Well... Don't judge me. I don't judge you.
I did, I did. Michelle, in due respect, I did about abstention.
Right. And I said before I voted that I rarely vote for recommendations anyway. That meeting was, I was told we wanted to get information on the pensions and the pay raises, how they would affect the funding for those two things. We were not discussing the actual bills and whether we were going to make a recommendation. My colleague decided he wanted to make a recommendation for whatever reason. I did not want to participate. I was going to leave. She asked me to stay so that if I had left, there would be no vote. So I abstained because I didn't believe in what was going on. It was, I didn't understand why it was even brought up at that point. But like she said, that's not why we were here. We were here to get information. We listened, I and everyone else listened to 30-something people speak. So if I just didn't want to participate, I would have left a long time ago, but I didn't agree with what was going on, so I abstained.
Can I respond?
Or I would have stayed home if I didn't want to participate.
Can I, can I respond?
Sure.
My comments are never meant maliciously. I'm not a police officer. I'm a citizen, and I'm an elected official, and I've been an elected official longer than either of you. And my point is, is when my father passed away, I had a meeting that night, and I went because that's the office, that's what I swore to when I took my oath of office. And I'm not trying to minimalize your sister's passing away.
You can't.
Larden, it's a terrible thing to lose a family member. But that's part of the responsibility you take when you take your oath of office. The other thing is, in the 45 years I've been involved, I've never abstained on anything. It's either yes or no, because that's what the people elect you for. And all I'm saying is, this is being viewed as political. And why I say that is because of what's been talked about here tonight, what's been talked about at the last council meeting I attended, and it might come in in January. That's fine, but the police need to have an answer. And like I say, this, this, other than the right-to-work issue and one time a curriculum change in the after-school district, I have never had so many constituents contact me. And the fact that this was voted in by overwhelmingly, so overwhelmingly, by St. Louis County, they respect the police department, and like I say, I respect everybody up here, okay? I know you're serving your community. I know you have other things. I've worked three jobs in my life, so I understand about hard work. The point being is, our police officers are here because they're distressed. They do put their lives on the line for us. When there's a problem, they're the ones that handle it. I mean, Chief Belmar talked about the people in the riots who got broken jaw, broken collarbone, spit on through Ferguson and everything. And I'm not talking about that. But the point, okay, I won't go into Ferguson, I won't go into Galleria, but I'm just saying, they're here for a reason. They protect us, and they need an answer. And that's all I'm encouraging you to do. And please, don't take offense to anything I say as personally.
Thank you, Bob. You got to wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, you know the process as a legislator.
I'm sorry.
Legislator, that you have to perfect a bill first and then find a passage. So I don't know why you're saying as a legislator that we held up a bill we haven't even perfected yet.
You had a thing to vote on last week.
That's why it's confusion. That's the confusion, and that's why we should not have even had a vote because that caused confusion. And I should have just walked out then so there wouldn't be this misunderstanding. That was not a vote. That was nothing, that was just, oh.
It was a vote taken.
We weren't supposed to vote.
Sam voted no.
What?
Pat voted yes. Gentleman here voted yes.
To do what? What did we vote to do?
May I make a comment?
Yeah, he made a vote.
What did we vote to do?
You're going to, Bobby, can't hang it the whole night. I'm sorry. We got other people that need to speak.
I'm answering what you said.
Chairman, can I just clarify something?
Sure.
As we've done the entire time I've been on the county council, when we have committee meetings, I did what I thought, what I've seen done at every committee meeting, made a recommendation, knowing that it's not a vote on the issue, was a recommendation, which is what I said. I recommended that we move, that we send this to the council to be approved. And we voted on the recommendation. It's normal practice. It's what we do. And there was nothing, though, confusion in my part about that. I didn't try to confuse the issue. I just, that's, if you misunderstood that we were voting on the bill, we weren't, obviously.
The meeting was for a fact-finding meeting. We were trying to...
It was a committee to hold me.
But it was a fact find. We were not supposed to vote, and you know that.
What do you mean? I, don't tell me what I know.
If you all want to continue, that's going to hold up our meeting. I think what everyone needs to understand is that this bill is moving along its normal course.
It is.
It hasn't been delayed. It hasn't been held. I understand that that message is out there, and it's been told with conviction, and it's been believed with conviction, and there's nothing we can do about that. What we can do is continue with the public testimony tonight and then move forward and vote on a pay raise bill that it sounds like we're all for, and then we can talk about all the other issues that surround that. Next speaker.
Andrew Wheelahan, followed by Robert Wallace.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the council for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Andrew Wheelahan. I'm a lifetime resident of St. Louis County, where I currently live with my wife and daughters. I'm also a St. Louis County police officer. I've been a police officer for about 10 years, and I'm currently a detective in the child abuse unit. My current salary is the same as starting pay for new police officers right out of the academy. County government has taken some steps in recent years to increase the starting pay of officers to make the police department competitive when it comes to hiring. However, after several years of not receiving any pay increases, the compression of officer salaries is still the biggest problem facing the police department in terms of retaining quality, experienced police officers. It's easy to see why, when you take into account inflation and rising insurance costs, I'm not taking home much more money than I was when I first became an officer. I'd like to share a personal story with you tonight. When my wife and I learned she was pregnant last year with our second child, we were concerned about our finances. We were making ends meet just fine, raising one child on my salary and my wife's teaching salary. After looking at the numbers and making adjustments, we believed we would be fine. In the months leading up to April, we were cautiously optimistic about Prop P passing. It was always discussed publicly that the funds raised would go towards fixing the compression of officer salaries, among other things like training and equipment. We believed if it passed, it would mean financial stability and the possibility of a better quality of life for our family, and also a stronger, better police department. I voted yes on Prop P, and we were happy to wake up on April 5th to learn that the proposition passed. Later that month, we welcomed our second daughter, Olivia, to the world. Our joy quickly turned to horror when, within her first few hours of life, she started to turn blue. She was later taken by ambulance to Cardinal Glennon's NICU, where she spent the next four days. She was diagnosed as having a hole in her heart and needs to see a pediatric cardiologist for ongoing care. After she came home, we became concerned about money and if we would be able to afford her medical bills. Then to top it off, last month, of course, our air conditioning went out during the 90-degree heat wave and needed to be replaced in its entirety. Now here we are in October, facing the possibility this pay matrix not being approved. As police officers, we are not immune to falling on rough times when we have large, unexpected expenses. I'm sure I'm not the only police officer dealing with these types of issues. With my daughter potentially needing surgery to fix the hole in her heart, I don't know if we're going to be able to afford it, especially if some other unforeseen expense comes along. My wife and I don't live an extravagant lifestyle. We live in a small starter home, and we drive old, used economy cars. And as our wages remain stagnant, the cost of living rises, we find it harder and harder to make ends meet. To the council members wanting to make sure my pension will still be there when I retire, I appreciate the concern. But I would ask that you listen to the experts who have explained why my pension will be fine under this new plan. I ask that you stop worrying about my financial situation in 20 years and worry about my financial situation right now. Anybody with a sick child knows, the last thing they want to be concerned about is how much money it's going to cost to help their child get better. This pay increase won't make us rich, but it will ease concerns about finances and allow us to focus on more important things like my family's health and well-being. The voters of St. Louis County made it clear at the ballot box in April that they want better-trained, better-equipped, and better-paid officers. Now I ask that you, the members of this council, do your part in giving what your constituents voted for. Please perfect this bill tonight and pass it next week.
Next speaker is Robert Wallace, followed by Robert Dean.
I'm Robert Wallace. I'm a detective with St. Louis County Police Department. Thank you very much for your time. I have proudly served the St. Louis County Police Department for the last 11 years. Just last October, I received my current assignment to the crime scene unit. I've worked homicides, suicides, shootings, cuttings, arsons, domestic assaults, burglaries, recovered stolen vehicles, search warrants, the list goes on. It's been a very interesting assignment. For example, I was unaware of the number of times our crime scene unit is called to surrounding municipalities and counties to conduct or assist in investigations. I have processed or assisted on calls in Belle Fountain Neighbors, Ruhrview, Ladue, Berkeley, Northwoods, Pine Lawn, Overland, Jefferson County. Again, the list goes on. It can be a stressful and demanding job. No matter how strenuous, disgusting, and difficult the crime scene may be, we can never walk away from it. I'm not the only one called to numerous scenes. We have 17 crime scene detectives and three detective sergeants all responding to calls in the surrounding areas 24 hours a day, and this is just the crime scene unit. Our crimes against persons detectives are constantly requested as well. The workload can be intense. The compression problem has been worsening for quite some time. After 11 years in this department, including almost a decade patrolling the North County precinct, I'm now making starting pay. A 22-year-old police recruit with no experience, fresh out of the academy, is making the same $48,200 as I am. At 22 years old, I would have been ecstatic for that salary. However, I'm 38 now and supporting a family with two young children. It is very challenging to make ends meet. I work a lot of overtime and have regularly worked secondary jobs. The St. Louis County Police Department has an enormous responsibility, a responsibility to our citizens, to do our best to protect them, a responsibility to protect those who cannot protect themselves, and a responsibility that for many of us is not a job, it is a calling. I also have a responsibility to my family, to be there more than I have been for the last decade, to be present in these, their most formative years. Instead of working many of my days off, I should be spending that quality time with them, ensuring they grow to be productive, caring, capable members of society. I'm asking you to pass Prop P as proposed, not just for me. I'm asking for my wife and my kids, who aren't here this evening because they have soccer practice. I certainly hope that making my pay comparable with my experience will allow me to make more of those practices I have been missing. Thank you again for your time.
Next speaker is Robert Dean, followed by, I apologize if I'm reading this name wrong, Floyd Blankwell.
Good evening. Like I said, my name is Robert Dean. I've been with the county police for 21 years. I would like to take this time to thank the county executives, Steve Stanger, the county board members, Chief Belmar over there, and I FOP for working hard, tireless hours, getting Prop P to where it is today. In my 21 years with this department, I have never seen the county government and the police department come together to work on a bill like this to get it passed, so I applaud you all. So I applaud you all and I really appreciate that. Like most officers said, I've been a police officer 21 years. Uh, I supposedly topped out 10 years ago and I'm still close to a starting pay. Uh, my wife, which she could have been here, she's a nurse, but she's working overtime too, to, uh, help ends meet. Uh, the pass of Prop P would be a win for all of my family. Uh, right now, like most officers, we don't get to go to a lot of, uh, uh, school activities with our kids. Uh, rec days, what is that? Because you're working your rec days as a secondary job. So it would be great to actually use your rec day as rec, you know, to rewind with all the stuff that's going on today. Uh, so I just hope everybody can come together, we can pass Prop P, move on, make the citizens happy, make you guys happy, and make us happy. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Floyd Blankwell.
Blankwell.
Blankwell, thank you, sir. Followed by Jan Mirakatani.
Good evening, everybody. And, uh, I hope everybody's doing well. I see there's a lot of emotion going on here and, uh, well, it's okay. It's not the first argument and it's not gonna be the last argument. But the point is, we need to end the argument. We need to work out an agreement. We voted for the Prop P, fine. You know, I'm an alderman for a small municipality and we're trying to survive, just, just to make ends meet, pay the bills, you know? And we want to pay our police officers. You know, I got my little deal set, said black, back to blue, no problem, we back you, baby. And I tell the people out there that's, that's fighting and arguing with the police officer, you cannot have it both ways. You can't holler hell at the police and then help police. I mean, which way you want it? To serve and protect, we appreciate it. It's time to come together, work out a deal. You're gonna get a raise. Everybody knows you're gonna get a raise. How much of a raise, how big of a raise, how soon the raise? I don't know. What I'm concerned about is, why are we fighting so vehemently? Why are we such, why such speak? Why are we doing this? Maybe you have a faction and a faction that can't come together, it's time to come together and work out a deal. It's gonna be all right, one way or another. Let's come together and do this thing. You deserve it, citizens deserve it, municipalities all deserve it. All very much.
Next speaker is Jan Mirakatani, followed by Andrew Bennett.
During the gathering, yes, spring, I remember watching TV. I do not pay attention to bloody glass. When I saw the executive, St. Louis County, and I saw Chief Belmar on the news talking about Prop P, then I lit up, I was so excited. When I saw the print ad, I read it from one end to the other. It said nothing about pension. It talked about a pay increase, about hiring new police officers, about giving them what they need. St. Louis County is my second family. I have taught at the St. Louis County Police Academy since 1989. I have ridden close to 3,000 hours with police officers. In my opinion, you don't get to have a right of opinion about the police until you've ridden with them. It would be one of those things. My heart goes out to them. There's two things that I've seen in this past year. One, I work in a lot of different police departments, a lot of municipalities. I have interviewed so many officers who left St. Louis County Police. I can name the five departments where they work now, where they immediately got $10,000, $12,000, $15,000 more for their families. And in interviewing each of these people, I asked them, why did you leave? And it's heartwarming to say, I did not leave because I didn't like St. Louis County Police. I believed in the leadership. I believed in what we were doing. I liked the officers I worked with, I liked the people I worked for. Damn, you can't turn away $15,000. My family immediately better off. The other thing that I've seen is that I am a liberalist. This said one thing, Prop P said what it was. And when we talk about unintended consequences, this is not an unintended consequence. This department is bleeding, it is bleeding a lot of experienced, really good people that are leaving, that did not want to leave. And they would stay if they got a raise. I do not want St. Louis County to become a training mill where we put people through the academy and then we train them in field training and then they go on probation and four or five years later, they go out to some other department because they are now gonna make what somebody's making to work for that department. It's not a fair fight. Unintended consequences, we are becoming a training mill. We do not want that. We have excellent officers. This is my second family behind me. I want you to do what Prop P said.
Next speaker is Andrew Bennett, followed by Elizabeth Snyder.
Hi, my name is Andrew Bennett. I don't know what district I'm in, so, um, anyway. So I've been protesting, activists being beaten by police for the last, uh, year and a half now. And I, as a white person, have seen just a fraction of what people of color face every single day, which I don't see any of it really. But I've been beaten, I've been maced, I've been tear gassed for just standing there. I've seen my friends beaten, I've been choked. And, um, I've gotta be honest, it makes me scared to see a police officer. So I've spent the last year and a half trying to understand what people mean by when they say black lives matter. Because I'm gonna be totally honest, two years ago, when people said black lives matter, my first thought was all lives matter. But then I started actually seeing that too, unfortunately, to a lot of the people up here and a lot of the people back there, black lives don't matter. And the system says that black lives don't matter. You can't say all lives matter without understanding that black lives are unproportionately affected. So what I'm gonna do is I have 1 minute and 54 seconds left and I'm going to repeat this, so please, listen to me. Black lives matter here, white silence is violence. Say it loud, say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud, say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud, say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud, say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud, say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud, say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud, say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
Say it loud, say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
Say it loud and say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud and say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
Say it loud and say it clear, black lives, they matter here. Say it loud and say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
Say it loud and say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
Say it loud and say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
Say it loud and say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
Say it loud and say it clear.
Black lives, they matter here.
White silence is violence. White silence.
Is violence.
White silence.
Is violence.
White silence.
Is violence.
And I'm gonna spend the last 30 seconds saying that there's a lot of white people out here. And I hope that you listen to me and that you just don't think, oh, it's just some random teenager up there. Because I've seen a lot of stuff, but it's not even close to what a lot of people of color have seen. So please, 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 do some white folk work, talk to the people next to you and realize that when black people say black lives matter, they're not trying to be special, they're just trying to live. They're just trying to say, hey, look at me, I'm actually not wanting to be killed by the police. Thank you for your time, I'm gonna leave before you kick me out.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Snyder, followed by Columbus Love.
First off, I want to say thank you for, um, allowing me to speak and for allowing all opinions of both sides of the issue to speak because that is the right thing to do. I don't know how this got turned into a race thing, that's, that's kind of sad because it's not a race thing that we're talking about right now. Obviously, if, okay, white silence is not violence, I'm going to say that, okay? If you want to make a difference, go be a cop. Go sign up in the academy and do what they do every day. Now, onto this issue. Blake, I believe a year ago that Blake's passing and the taking of his life opened a lot of eyes in this community, that's why I believe it played a huge part in passing Prop P. That, that was heartwarming to me and it was very helpful for a lot of these officers in this county. For one, Blake and I were living in a tiny house, we had a two-year-old son. We were, we were struggling to buy diapers and formula and, and food and we couldn't go out, we just had to stay home, stuff like that. And, and that's normal for the everyday, you know, struggling couple. But the difference between my family and the family next door that didn't go out and give their life every night, is Blake left going to sur, ser, serve other people. He put on a vest, he said, I'm gonna go out tonight, I might not come home, Elizabeth, but I love you, okay? So it hurts when that is trivialized because they deserve a raise. And I'm sorry, but they put their lives on the line. Standing here in this room tonight in all their vests, they're taking a risk. Each time that they put that uniform on, they are taking a risk. And that's something that other professions do not do. A nurse practitioner, as that man said, does not do that every day. They do not offer their life for others every day. And that is something to be respected and honored. And that's why I believe that they, they deserve these raises. They deserve the pay that, that they would be getting. And you know, Blake did this, he, he did this job not for the money, obviously. He loved his job, he loved going out and doing what he did. But that does not mean that they do not deserve it. I don't deserve, with my job, what they make or what they should make because I'm not giving my life every night. For the people that just don't understand it, they obviously aren't married to a cop, don't have a cop in their family, and if you do, then you should know better than anyone what they do for us. So please, I urge you to reconsider and really think about what you're gonna be doing for these officers because they're not bad, they're humans and they have lives and they have families and they have kids and they have daycare and they have school to pay for. It's just, they, they deserve it, okay, guys? So thank you for letting me speak.
Did you understand? Did you understand, though, what we said about there was nothing to reconsider? We've never said that we weren't going to vote.
Okay, and that's good that you, you say that because the officers need to hear that. Because a lot of hearsay goes around and when people say it gets political and they hear one member say this and one member say that, they just need to hear, hey, we are gonna get that pay raise. Because otherwise they're like, oh my gosh, now they're trying to, you know, chop it up into little pieces and put it in other areas, just like whenever I, I, you know, the thing with Chesterfield and they said they were gonna put it somewhere else. That's what they're hoping you're not going to do. They need these raises and that's what they're worried about.
And that's what the problem has been, that there are people saying things and I don't know why they're doing that. It seems like somebody's, it's a concentrated effort to make it sound like we were not going to do that. But that is never, I've never heard any council member here say that they were not going to vote in favor of the raises.
Okay, that's good, that's what they need to hear.
I just want that to be clear to you because that is not the case.
Okay, great, that, that's, that's all we need to hear, as long as we, we know that there is not two sides to this and that other people are, you know, texting other people on stuff. It gets, it gets very scary, so, thank you for saying that.
Elizabeth, we're sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
And you've been a great advocate for the police.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming to testify.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Next speaker is Columbus Love, followed by Shanet Hall.
Good evening, Chief Belmar, Deputy Cox, uh, the entire St. Louis County Command Staff, County Executive Steve Stanger, uh, the entire council board. I want to thank you for this opportunity, for the, uh, for this time to, to speak with you regarding, uh, Prop P and the current pay matrix. First, before I start, uh, Councilman Erby, I really, uh, want to say I'm sorry for your loss and I wish you and your family the best during this difficult time.
Thank you.
My name is Columbus Love, I'm with the St. Louis County Police Department. I've been currently with the St. Louis County Police Department for 12 years. I am currently assigned to the bomb and arson unit and I have been there for approximately the last two years. After talking with other officers around the, uh, department and different personnel, it was brought to my attention that we had the ability to speak in front of you and give our opinion and our voice regarding Prop P and the pay matrix. I thought to myself, at any time for representation or time for our voice to be heard, this would be the time. As a child, I remember watching my mother raise me and my two older brothers by herself. At the time, working two to three jobs, just so she could provide, make things, make ends meet. Too hard for me to provide a comfortable lifestyle for us, it often meant that she could not be there, could not be at home, miss certain moments, family dinners and other traditions. So I strive to be able to provide for my family financially and ensure that they never have to experience the certain hardships that I experienced as a child. With that said, I love my mother dearly and I understand she had to do what she needed to do to provide for us. With the possibilities of Prop P and the pay matrix, this further guarantees that my children will never have to see those type of hardships. Many of us would welcome the opportunity to provide more constant financial security to our families and would not have to choose between working a secondary job or to spend time with our families. Due to the current salary of our department, I am forced to work overtime, multiple secondary jobs to further provide for my family and due to the cost of living, the increase. But the additional money that Prop P and the pay matrix would allow, it would allow me to focus strictly on my primary job, which is currently bomb and arson unit, the bomb squad, and focus on certain things without financial stress. In addition to supplement my income, in addition to freeing up a significant amount of time to spend with my wife and my kids. I'm a father of a four-year-old son and a seven-year-old daughter. I'm a husband of, to my wife for the last 10 years. And I want to be able to experience this, these certain things, this soccer games, fun games, Girl Scouts, school events. Prop P is truly a game changer, will help further allow me to uphold that promise to my wife and kids, which is there to be there for support and accompany, provide them financial aid. Lastly, I truly understand your concern and I respect the reservation regarding Prop P and the pay matrix. Like you said earlier, sir, I really hope we do put everything aside and we can come to an agreement and we all vote to move Prop P forward and pass before we can continue to represent St. Louis County, provide safety at a professional manner that we will do.
That is 10 minutes, Mr. Chair.
That's all.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Shanet Hall, followed by Nikki Brown.
Good evening, members of the board. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to hear us speak and voice our concerns. As stated, my name is Police Officer Shanet Hall and I'm currently assigned to the Central County Precinct. I've been with the department for seven years. Half of that time I've spent as a civilian in dispatch and the other half I've served proudly as a dedicated police officer. Like many of my colleagues, I take great pride in my profession. Every day I work, I put on my uniform proudly and protect and serve the citizens of my community. Today, I come to you with a slightly different angle than my brothers and sisters before me. I come to you as a double minority. Not only am I a double minority in my personal life, but also in my place of work. While some may see this as a difficult task, I wholeheartedly embrace what some may consider a setback. However, as I look around my work environment, I cannot help but to notice that I, an African-American female police officer, am overly, overwhelmingly, excuse me, outnumbered within my own department. Now, I can honestly say firsthand that significant efforts have been made to attract and recruit more minorities as I work alongside Recruiting Officer Franklin, from whom you heard from yesterday. While money is not always the end-all and be-all answer, it's a very important solution to the problem that we have. We are consistently losing very good officers, but we will also be losing another group of people, good officers whom are also minorities. Excuse me, if our problem of lack of progressing salaries isn't resolved. While we are sitting here right now discussing how money should be spent, there are other departments, both local and federal, who are actively recruiting your St. Louis County Police Officers. Those same local and federal agencies have figured out what we have not and that is how to pay their officers what they are worth. You have heard time and time again that raises are important, but do you truly understand its importance? Ladies and gentlemen, the passage of this bill is extremely important. Not only for our families, but for the strengthening of relationships between minorities and police officers. The St. Louis County Police Department should be able to adequately display to the community in which we serve that we are just as diverse as they are. Also, when potential Also, when potential employees look to join the most professional police department around, they should too, be able to see a reflection of themselves within the police department. We should be able to say, that with the apartment of over 850 police officers, we have more than just 133 African-American police officers, of which that number is only 11 African-American female police officers. Eleven. I ask you not only to remember that number, but honestly let it sink in, when you do the right thing by passing this bill. Lastly, I believe we must not lose sight of why we all choose to work for, and work with this department, which is to make a difference. Today's difference lies within your power, and that is the passage of Bill, both 272 and 273. Thank you.
Next speaker is Nikki Brown, followed by Jennifer Haake.
Good evening, council members, Executive Steve Stanger, Chief Bellmore, the entire St. Louis County family that's here this evening. I'm Officer Nikki Brown, I've been with St. Louis County for nine years, I'm assigned to the Training Academy, St. Louis County Municipal Training Academy. Each of us in this room has an obligation, a duty, and responsibility far greater than the seats here today. Our reach to communities that we serve, constituents, stakeholders, police officers, is far greater than the arguing back and forth and miscommunication. I came on to St. Louis County Police Department in 2008, because members from the South County Precinct exemplified professionalism, and I had very bad experiences with police. So to finally meet officers who positively impacted my life, I was greatly indebted to that. And I have not regretted becoming an officer with St. Louis County Police Department, but I'm aware that my position is far greater than being an instructor at an academy, being a single mother, being a doctoral candidate, and being an adjunct. Those are all the things that I do, but I understand I have so much more. Money, true enough, is not everything, but when I leave here, I go back to a son who has not seen me, and I'm supposed to be on vacation this week, but I understand that it was important that I speak here this evening. Also, I want to thank the different supervisors I've had, because I understand that when money comes into play, people leave, and the caliber of officers that come in is different. I've had very good officers as friends to leave, supervisors to leave, and each of those have impacted me. I remember my first sergeant who told me, "Nikki, keep taking those continuing ed classes." When I told one of my captains, "I can't figure out if I want to be more of an educator or a police officer," he told me, "Go be an adjunct," and that's exactly what I did. I remember speaking with a colonel, and I said, "I'm kind of perplexed about my doctoral degree," and I was encouraged, "Go for your doctorates," because the education is something that they cannot take away from you. And those were all members, even though they wear a police uniform, they understood their purpose was far greater, and their reach was far more influential. So this evening, I want to thank you all for your consideration, thank you for listening to us, because as police officers, we do have the dedication and responsibility to the constituents. Yes, the community wants more accountability, as an instructor, I want to see qualified candidates come through the academy, because my partners here, my colleagues, they deserve to have the best-trained officers hired, trained, and retained on the police department. Money should not be an option, but unfortunately, it is and has become one. But again, I thank you all for your time, thank you for your consideration, and God bless.
Next speaker is Jennifer Haake, followed by Justin Adams.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Haake. I don't wear a uniform, and I don't have a badge, I've never been sworn in or taken an oath. For me, the thin blue line is different. The thin blue line I walk is behind the scenes. My husband has put on his uniform and made the badge proud for 12 years now. My husband puts his own self-interests aside, and gets in his squad car each morning, because your security is his responsibility. My husband must be able to make a person stop bleeding, and start a person's breathing. My husband must chase every lead to find that single witness who saw what happened, and will agree to admit to remember what they saw. My husband must make decisions in seconds that affect lives forever. When people are in danger, my husband shows up to keep them safe. When a couple's argument gets out of hand, my husband is there to maintain order. When someone has no one else to call, my husband responds without hesitation. And in response to police officers' dedication and tireless efforts to protect and serve, they get yelled at and spit on, they get called names and cussed at, they get death threats and complaints. In every civilized society, there must be people that are tasked with maintaining order. In our society, those people are the police. See, the truth is, anyone can go to the, can become a police officer, they just have to make it through the academy. But not everyone wants to handle police work. Just like all of you, I chose a career that doesn't require weapons to make it through a shift. Just like you, in my job, there's some room for error, but for my husband and the rest of the brave men and women in blue, there's none. An error for you means a demotion, an error for cops means a funeral. In your job, you strive to succeed, in their job, they strive to survive. You tell your family, "See you tonight when you leave for work," cops pray for that. A hero is defined as an ordinary person who faces extraordinary circumstances and acts with courage, honor, and self-sacrifice. That is what police officers are. It is time, after more than a decade of systematic neglect, to reward police officers and their families with the long-awaited Proposition P salary increases. This is not about politics, this is about doing the right thing. If you or someone you love needed the police, the last thing you would think about is money. Price would be no object in securing the safety and well-being of your loved ones. So why is money obstructing your ability to pass the new salary plans now, for the very officers that you want to show up when you need them? A viable plan to contain pension costs and close the funding percentage gap without pilfering Proposition P proceeds has been presented, and it's my understanding that there are numerous council members who are prepared to vote yes, and we thank you.
Can you wrap up, Forrest?
Um, to all the holdouts, I'm here today to stand with all the brave police officers and their families, whose daily sacrifices demand higher compensation, in asking you to vote yes, to providing the requested salary increases in its current form for officers and for the community, the means to provide vital manpower and resources needed to build a stronger, better-trained, better-equipped, and responsive police force. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Justin Adams, followed by Patrick Hoekamp.
My name is Justin Adams, I am here with my wife Keisha, and my seven-year-old son Gunner. I am a resident of unincorporated St. Louis County, although my wife would argue that I live on the second floor of Police Headquarters. I am a taxpayer and a voter. First and foremost, I would like to thank you. Being a public service servant is a thankless job, as most of us in this room are aware. A simple thank you for doing what you do speaks volumes, so thank you, I appreciate it. I have been a police officer for the St. Louis County Police Department for over a decade, and in that decade, I have heard politicians who sat in those very seats, make repeated promises and pledges of their support for the police, only to turn their backs on us time and time again, in our time of need. For that reason, you cannot fault us for the skepticism you have saw, seen in the past meetings. I do not want to use my time to tell you how important this bill is to me, just understand, I have the same position as every other voter in St. Louis County, that you will do the right thing. Mr. Page, I personally want to thank you for intently listening to every speaker that, that presented, in this meeting and the other two. You truly seemed engaged and cared about what was being said. You care, your care was extended to ensuring that our pension would be there when I retire. I am not a smart man, but I have read the letter offered by Mr. Stanger, and listened to the testimony over the past several meetings. I believe the questions were answered. My loyalty for this profession runs deep, and I plan to retire from this department. I am confident I will be able to do so when the time comes. Ms. Erby, I want to thank you for providing an explanation on to why you left. I am sorry for your loss. In the absence of that explanation, uh, I'm sure many rumors flew, so thank you for providing I want to take the time to address the statement that you made, that you felt like you were being attacked, and we were attacking you. I tru- trust me, we were not. I do not condone the laughter that was present the last, at the two meetings ago, however, you are confusing disrespect for passion and frustration. At one time or another, almost every member of this council has said that they support the passage of this bill for the implementation on January 1st. Now is the time to set politics aside, and let your actions speak louder than your words. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Patrick Hoekamp, followed by Jonathan Cunningham.
Mr. Stanger, members of the council, my name is Patrick Hoekamp, I'm a 15-year veteran of the St. Louis County Police Department. I am a sergeant currently assigned to the Crime Scene Unit and Conveyance Unit. Like Detective Wallace said earlier, our unit responds to everything from larcenies to homicides and the autopsies that follow. The Crime Scene Unit not only serves unincorporated county, and the contracted municipalities, but we also respond to municipalities who request us because they do not have the capability to process a serious felony crime. We also process any major case squad activations if the homicide occurred within St. Louis County. In fact, a lot of municipalities request assistance from all of our specialized units. We are a full-service police department, but not paid like one. On my way to and from work every day, I pass by a business that has a banner, "Up to $60,000 for Store Manager." That business is McDonald's. As a 15-year veteran with a hu- 1,000 hours of law enforcement continuing ed, in my current job responsibilities, I make $57,000 a year. A person who oversees employees who make hamburgers and french fries makes more money than someone who oversees the evidence side of a homicide investigation, where we locate, develop, document, preserve, and package evidence, which will have a bearing on the family of deceased getting justice for their loved one. Lastly, on October 13th, 2017, New Orleans Police Officer Marcus McNeil was killed in the line of duty. I read the article last night, it was written by an unknown officer, but I care to share some of that with you, as I think it's appropriate with what's going on in the St. Louis area. This is not a career choice for us, this is a calling. We understand the risk, we understand it's a thankless profession, we understand our families are constantly worried, we understand that some people who help, we help, don't like us because of the uniform we wear, but we will always run and help them anywhere. We are all too familiar with a little pay, little sleep, and medical issues associated with stress. We also know the feeling of a life slipping away while you hold someone's hand. We also know how it feels to tell a mother their child, no matter how old, has died. We have seen things that horror stories could never relate to an audience. We continue to put on our uniform, our equipment, and our badge, no matter what the day, how the day went before. Our current pay is unacceptable to me, my family, the men and women of this department, and the citizens who overwhelmingly voted for Prop P. Hopefully, this is unacceptable to you guys. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jonathan Cunningham, followed by Mildred Kleinz.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jonathan Cunningham, I'm a sergeant with the St. Louis County Police Department, I'm currently assigned at Jennings. Uh, I want to first thank you guys for the work you do, uh, thank you for your time and consideration regarding this. Um, our department, um, devotes a lot of time and, and invests a lot of energy into the communities that we serve, so, um, it was humbling and it was rewarding to see that same community invest in us, uh, when they voted for this Prop P. Um, and so we thank them for that, and again, we thank you for your work on that. One thing that this Prop P, or this pay raise, would do for all of us is allow us more time. Um, and what I mean by that is, you've heard, it's, it's not unique to any of us to work secondary jobs, or, or to work, uh, long hours for overtime, and as you've mentioned, none of us are, are strangers to hard work, but, one of the things I like to do is be active in our community and community outreach. Our department has a program called POW, the Police Athletic League, and, um, I'm a mentor and I coach in that league, and I like to, to help our youth, and I, I devote a lot of time to that, and I wish I had more time to, to give to them, and if I wasn't working the three secondary jobs, or doing overtime that I'm currently doing, I would be able to do more of that. Um, in two weeks, this, this Police Athletic League, we're going to take 40, 40 kids down to Memphis, Tennessee. It's gonna be off day for me, but I'm gonna go, and I'm gonna be a part of that, because I believe it's important. Um, this pay raise would allow me, not only to give back to my family, to, to attend more social events, but I get to do more stuff like that. Like any profession, um, everybody would be happy for a pay raise. Um, it affects your, your, your mental health, um, your emotional health, your physical health. I feel better talking about it right now. Uh, so, 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 we're, we, we all feel the same, uh... We, we all feel the same when it comes to that, I'm not going to argue about which profession is more important than the other, we all, we all feel the same when it comes to that. I just want to point out again, and I appreciate you guys, and I understand all the work you do, and, um, I thank you for your time, and it makes me happy, because I feel good thinking about what's coming.
Next speaker is Mildred Kleinz, followed by Sarah Wolf.
So, this is a lot of pressure, I'm real, I'm really nervous, but my mom always told me to speak my truth, so I will. So, the first thing I'd like to say is, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I will say that, uh, white silence is violence.
Yes, it is.
And that young man stood up, and he said, "Black Lives Matter," and I observed the room, and when he finished speaking, uh, I looked at the police officers, and none of them clapped, and that was disappointing to me. Uh, because when their fellow officers talked about getting a raise, uh, they all clapped. So, excuse me if I'm not jumping up and down for you all to get a raise, because, in my community, um, we're disproportionately killed and brutalized. But, let me just tell you something, I voted for Proposition P, but why, the reason I voted for it was because I feel like you guys need to have more training and, and more equipment, whatever you need. I would like, I would like for a lot of that money to be spent for, uh, diversity training, uh, de-escalation training, because I've witnessed too many times, when the police come on the scene, things seem to escalate. So I would really like for you all to have the tools that you need, and not see my community as the enemy. I raised two sons, I have two sons too, and I'm stressed every day, they're 36 and 29, and I still worry about my sons coming home, because they are black. And a mother like myself, I shouldn't have to worry about that, but the truth of, of the matter is, that's, that's, it is what it is, and that's real, reality. So, if you all could use some of those funds, uh, for the training that, uh, the officers need, bias training, we all have biases, but to, to me is, recognize, acknowledge that you have a bias, and try to figure out, not to let that influence your decision, because I ask officers all the time, black officers especially, you all came out and stuff, but I bet you never shot a, a, a white person, why is it that black officers don't shoot white people? There is a reason for that. There is a reason for that, and I want, I want- Yeah, I gave everybody respect, I didn't talk, I didn't talk, when you were talking, I wish I could have that same respect. I respect, I, I try, I want to respect police officers, I do respect them, but the, the, uh, that blue so, blue code of silence, when you see your fellow officer doing something wrong, I think you need to speak for, you need to speak up, you know, I think you do have a very dan- I think you do, do have a very dangerous job, but I think also, this money can also be used for other types, okay, o- other types of, uh, uh, community programs that can help our community, because more police is not the answer. Yes, everybody deserves a raise, because I want a raise on my job as well. So, can we use those funds also for programs that will help our community and maybe, um, figure out a way that the police officers can look at my community like they look at the rest of the community? That's all I ask, that's all I ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For all the disrespect that you've shown, for all the...
All the disrespect.
Okay.
All the disrespect, and you wonder what the problem with the community is right now.
Let's try and let the speakers speak, folks. We've, we've got a lot...
We didn't let the speaker speak.
They spoke over the speaker.
And we're supposed to be the police officers, and you wonder why we have an issue now?
Okay.
It's because we have officers that sit in this room with full of hatred in their heart, and as this lady spoke, you saw what they did to her.
They said that she's the enemy, and we're the enemy, when nobody's saying anything about their job type, little way that you do it. If you did it honorably, and you weren't sitting here acting like that, then we wouldn't need to be here today. You make it noises, all the stuff that y'all have been saying. If a community is saying that they are in distress and they want the officers to be involved, that means they want the officers to be involved, not kill, correct, and ask the way that y'all acting is not acting real sound.
Okay, okay.
Do you know anything? Do you know her? Are you serious about her? Exactly. Why does she say anyone know her? How many people do you know about her?
What about her? What about her? See? What does that tell you about her?
No. 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 They don't take her out. No. They're saying, they were, they were disrespected, so why you just don't remove somebody?
She had an exchange with that lady, but you all didn't...
No, remove everybody who was talking. Everybody who was talking should be removed.
You let her sit in here, you should let her sit in here. You should let that Colleen tell me to move, remove her. They, they know if they need to remove somebody.
I'm sorry.
But she shouldn't have told you that. She needs to say that at any other time during this meeting.
So, I would just ask that everyone please respect the speakers, and don't interrupt them, and don't engage in conversations, and let's see if we can let everyone speak. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sarah Wolf, followed by Daniel, I can't read the last name, starts with a K.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wolf, and I am a police wife. My husband John is a six-year veteran of the Saint Louis County Police Department. I could talk about the number of hours that my husband has had to work secondary, uh, to provide for our family. I could talk about how our kids' lives, birthday parties, first steps, have all been documented, um, by picture texts, Snapchat, and video calls, um, just to make him feel like he's present and that he's there. Um, how my four-year-old daughter literally thinks that he has a bed at the police station because of how many extra-long hours he works. But first, I'll talk about my husband. Um, he's received multiple commendations in and out of his occupation. On August thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, he received a commendation from the municipality where we live for saving our neighbor from her burning house while he was off duty. On August tenth, two thousand seventeen, he was recognized by the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association for outstanding service. He's received a commendation for, for chasing two criminals in possession of stolen guns, credit cards, and a passport taken from multiple robberies. He, like many of the other men and women here today, have endured night after night and day after day of protests, selflessly putting themselves in harm's way. They are the thin blue line. My husband is an example of the type of officer that this county is at risk of losing if this raise is not implemented the way it is written. Quality dedicated officers are leaving the department at a high rate right now, but that rate will only go higher as the officers look to other departments where they are compensated at a rate that reflects their experience. As someone stated last week, the risks of running an understaffed, less experienced department include workers' compensation claims, higher overtime rates, possible lawsuits, high turnover rates, among so many other things. You question how the pay raise will affect the county pension plan. Why don't you take into account how vetoing this bill will cost the county? In my husband's years of service, I've been able to see the attitude of the department from somewhat of an outside lens. After Ferguson, morale was low, motivation was scarce, because many people felt that they were serving a city that only wanted to spit in their faces, both literally and figuratively. My husband's motivation and enthusiasm returned when he transferred to the Afton Southwest Precinct in September of two thousand fifteen and became a field training officer. About a year later, the police community came together again in grief with the on-duty murder of Blake Snyder. This was a devastating loss, to say the least, and yet, this community had officers standing together despite the, despite the fresh reminder of what this job can entail. Though still grieving, spirits were lifted with the passing of Prop P. This felt like the community was acknowledging and appreciating the dedicated work that these officers do. An employee who feels like an appreciate, who feels appreciated and like an essential cog in the system is a better and more dedicated worker. An employee who feels overlooked and unappreciated does not have that same zeal and fervor. And don't we want zeal and fervor in the men and women who put their lives on the line to protect us day in and day out? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Daniel, but I think I saw Daniel leave.
Ma'am, the issue was that, when you spoke out, when the other woman, she didn't talk to you, are you serious?
I didn't care if I was doing me.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm just trying to help you.
Do you want me to call the next speaker, mister?
Call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Areethie Williams, followed by Leon Chapman, I think?
Good evening. My name is Areethie Williams. I am a police sergeant with the Saint Louis County Police Department. Before speaking, I would like to first acknowledge everyone in their respective places. The council members, Chief Belmer, Deputy Chief Cox, the entire command staff, police officers, and citizens. Every single Saint Louis County police officer shares a common interest in regards to seeking a pay raise. One main interest is being able to take care of our families. For some of us, certain situations that we face may be prioritized over others. However, for me, my main priority is being able to adequately take care of my family. I am a single mother of two children, one daughter aged seventeen and one son aged twelve. My daughter is an honor student in her last year of high school. Her plan is to attend Washington University, majoring in pre-medicine. She would like to become a pediatrician. I want to be able to help financially with my daughter further in her education. I am also a college student as well, attending Webster University. I have three degrees, and I'm now currently seeking to obtain my doctoral degree. I have accumulated a very high dollar amount of educational expenses that I will have to pay back to the government. Right now, I work in abundance of overtime at the department, as well as secondary for other businesses to make ends meet and create a comfortable life for my family. With being a single mother, a college student, police sergeant, and working overtime, I am exhausted. Yet, I continue to answer the call of being a peacemaker. Despite the current chaos, I love being a police officer. Approving these pay raises will not fix my financial issues, but it will surely lessen the burden. Police officers are facing many social and economic issues during this time in law enforcement. There is no perfect profession. Despite the social and economic issues, an overwhelming majority of police officers have maintained a high level of integrity within the community. The members of the Saint Louis County Police Department deserve a pay raise. Approving these pay raises will benefit both police officers and the Saint Louis County Government. It will allow a competitive salary and help to create a more diverse police department. Having a more diverse police department will assist in the department's community policing relationships. Thank you for supporting our pay raises. I am confident you will approve pay raises because the council members will do what is in the best interest for the future of the Saint Louis County Police Department and its citizens. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, the li- name of the final speaker is really hard to leave. I think it's Leon. Phone number starts with nine six six.
Did anyone sign up to speak who hasn't spoken? Still left.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for everyone who spoke, and thanks for your patience.
I have something to say, I don't know what to say. Um, as we said earlier, no one on, that I know of has said they would not vote for pay raises for officers. We've heard people speak today. I had a hearing earlier, I was disappointed that no one from law enforcement attended that hearing, and I tried to make it clear that I wa- it was to be amending offenses and abridging of relationships between officers and the community. However, there are quite a few of you who are here doing that hearing outs- outside of the chambers, and I hope that you are listening at the, to the frustration that you saw of what you saw today. Yes, people think that you guys should get raises, but they also want you to have training and equipment and programs, as you heard mentioned by several people. There is some distrust amongst the community for police officers. So, I say this to say that I hope my colleagues, when I present legislation for more training and more programs for the community, I hope my colleagues join me and vote for those measures, and they are asking us to vote for this. Like I said, we don't have a problem with the raises, but we want the community to start to trust the police officers again, and we want the officers to get out in the community and meet these, these young people, black and white, and get to know them like they used to do when I was a kid. They came to my classroom, and I knew Officer Finley when I saw him on the streets. So, that's what I'm looking forward to, and again, I hope my colleagues vote for the legislation that I'm going to put forth, asking for training on various measures.
Thank you.
I'll just be brief this time. I agree with the Councilwoman, uh, Gray. You know, it bothers me when I see people disrespect the police. That bothers me, because no respect for you means that we're not safe. That's the bottom line. So, we want to see that, we want to see that improved, and I believe, I'm, I only speak for myself on this, although I know my colleagues, we've all said that you deserve the raise. That's never been an issue with us. We were elected to be, uh, to be responsible, and I think that's what co- I know that's what Councilwoman Page was doing, in, in, in looking at the retirement fund and whatever. I don't think that was, that was political. That's, that's, that's our responsibility. It's never been a, a, a question as to whether or not we were going to vote in favor of your raises. Just please keep that in mind, and I think that we have to, we have to learn to communicate, not spread lies or, you know, hearsay or whatever, because there's been a lot of that that happened with this. That's, that's why the tensions are high tonight. And like that lady says, she voted for Prop P, but they're just asking for you to give back to the community. I think that's what all of us want. Please, and please don't judge. I gotta, I had a comments about why I didn't smile at the last meeting, and why I seemed disinterested. I had a reason. It was hard to be here. So, let's not judge. I don't judge you, I don't judge all of you by the nasty comments that a police officer forwarded to me that I saw some years ago. I haven't judged you because of that, so don't judge me.
Any other comments? Okay. Um, concludes our public forum, let's proceed with the introduction bills.
Bill number two seventy-four, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $200,000 from the Saint Louis County Children's Service Fund, appropriating the same for the National Family Partnership Program, and authorizing the Director of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number two seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of $998,180 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD, appropriating the same for housing and supportive services, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary contracts. Bill number two seventy-six, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $1 million from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, appropriating same for support of the Castle Point Neighborhood Revitalization and Fear Reduction Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26,705 by repealing and reenacting Section Two pertaining to a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for design and construction management services in connection with the taxiway pavement maintenance and taxiway echo lighting rehabilitation project at Spirit of Saint Louis Airport. Bill number two seventy-eight, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a deed for a drainage easement located at Spirit of Saint Louis Airport to Wings Corporate Estates Association and the City of Chesterfield. Bill number two seventy-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the Chair of the County Council to execute a contract with Hackchild Bloom and Company LLP to audit county financial records for fiscal years 2017, 2018, and 2019. Bill number two eighty, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract to the City of Chesterfield for construction and maintenance of roadway improvements along Chesterfield Parkway East. Bill number two eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a lease with Clarkson Wilson Investors LLC for space at seventy-eighty-two Clarkson Wilson Center for uses of West End Government Center. Bill number two eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance amending Chapter 201, Title II, Saint Louis County Revised Ordinance since nineteen seventy-four, as amended personnel general by repealing and reenacting Section 201.190 pertaining to compensation of police department employees. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection.
Bill number one sixty-two, introduced by Councilmembers Page and Harder.
Mr. Chairman, on, on this bill, uh, we received communication, uh, from Mr. Drysward concerning the condition of this bridge and the Allen Road Bridge, and, uh, it disturbs me because of the language that he referred to this bridge, uh, in such a way that, that they are going to reduce the speed to ten miles an hour and reduce the limit for the weight of trucks, uh, that exceeds six tons. And as we've talked about this bill in the past, we've, we've, uh, we've debate, debated this, and we've held it, uh, but at this point, I think it's time that we perfect this bill and that we move forward before this bridge falls down. And I am asking my colleagues here to help us move this forward so that we can get the necessary government funds, federal funds, for this, and to get this bill, to get this bridge fixed as it should have been months ago. So, I'm asking that we move this bill on perfection.
Second.
Roll call. I know it's not required, but we should control this.
Councilmember Herbie?
Well, I haven't had a chance to look at this bill. Um, I don't even have it. Yeah. Um, can we hold it one week more?
I think we've, we've held it probably, what, six weeks? I'm just very, I'm very concerned about this, this letter from our Highway Department.
Okay, well, I vote no.
Councilmember Page?
No.
Councilmember Wasser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on perfection of Bill number one sixty-two, there are three ayes, three noes, and one absent.
Um, this bill is not perfected, but I hope we can continue the conversation, because I think it's an important one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The federal funds, uh, $700,000, or they're about to fund this bridge. Is there a deadline on when that has to be, when this bill has to be passed before we lose those funds? Do you know?
I would ask if Mr. Drysward is here, if he could comment on that?
Okay, I'll follow it. Is he here? Oh, he's here. Of 2018? Of 2018. Okay, thank you.
Dan, what's the deadline to use these funds for another project that might be able to receive matching funds? You've never done that before? Okay, thanks.
Bill number 190, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, Bill number 190 is held.
Bill number 241, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Same motion, Bill number one, Bill number 241 is held.
Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Same motion, Bill number 249 is held.
Bill number 262, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to hold Bill 262.
Bill number 262 is held.
Bill number 265, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to hold, I'll hold it.
Bill number 265 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 266.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill number 266 is perfected.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect Bill number 267.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 267 is perfected.
Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 268.
Second.
Bill number, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 268 is perfected.
Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 269.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 269 is perfected.
Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 270.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 270 is perfected.
Bill number 271, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 271.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 271 is perfected.
Bill number 272, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 272.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 272 is perfected.
Bill number 273, introduced by Councilmember Page, Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Move to perfect, or move to adopt substitute Bill number...
Would you like me to read this?
Would you just read, yeah, read the title for me, please.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 273, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute two no random understanding with the St. Louis County Police Association Petral Order, Police Lodge 111, pertaining to collect a bargaining rights of certain county employees, amending Chapter 201, Title II, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, as amended personnel general, by repealing and reenacting Section 201.190 pertaining to compensation of police department employees and reserving funds generated by Proposition P. through May 1st, 2018.
Could you also read the new section that's being offered, that's the change? Section 6?
Section 6, 15% of each disbursement to St. Louis County of funds that are generated by Proposition P. for use by St. Louis County shall be set aside and reserved through May 1st, 2018. A report calculating the increased pension liability arising from the raises in this ordinance shall be reported to the County Council before May 1, 2018.
Thank you. So this substitute adopts all of the original language of Bill number 273 and adds additional language that asks that 15% of the Proposition P. funding be set aside until we have an accurate number on the amount needed to support an expected increased pension contribution to match the salary increases. Move for adoption of substitute Bill Number 1.
Second.
All in favor?
I could comment, please?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Again, thank you for your due diligence in this, and as, as before, as I mentioned, I was all in favor of the original bill, but knowing that the raises are the exact same in this bill as the original bill, the only changes is the 15%. We had, when I was informed and believed to be true, appropriate, correct amount of money into budget or in the pension funding with the $10 million surplus, but this will provide for that surplus as well. So the main thing, my concern right now is if we're perfecting a bill that will give everybody the raises that exactly as presented, and I appreciate you looking into their pension.
All opposed? Motion carries, substitute Bill Number 1, for Bill number 273 is adopted. A move of adoption, or move to perfect, substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 273.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 273 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 183, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold.
Bill number 183 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 189, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Tracus.
Move to, move, final passage, substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 189.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 189, there are six ayes and one absent.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill number 189 is finally passed.
Bill number 256, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 256.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 256, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 256 is finally passed.
Bill number 257, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill 257.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 257, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 257 is finally passed.
Bill number 258, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill number 258.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 258, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 258 is finally passed.
Bill number 259, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 259.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 259, there are five, six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 259 is finally passed.
Bill number 260, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 260.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, on Bill number 260, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 260 is finally passed.
Bill number 261, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number 261.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 261, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 261 is finally passed.
Bill number 263, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill 263.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 263, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 263 is finally passed.
Bill number 264, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 264.